Good afternoon. There's a couple of responsive people. Good afternoon. That's great. Thank you very much for joining us. My name is Peter Lee and I'm the Executive Director of Covered California. I'm going to review the agenda very briefly, but first, I want to thank you very much for joining us here today. This is the first town hall that Covered California has done. It's an opportunity to come into the communities we will be part of and have to be part of to share what we're doing and hear from you. And I'm thrilled to be joined by two of our board members, Kim Belche, who is here now, and Dr. Bob Ross, who will be joining us in a moment. Let me go quickly through the agenda. I'm going to do an overview of what we're going to be covering and set the stage, and then talk some about what the Affordable Care Act is and the sort of direction we're going. Kim will talk about both the mission and goals of Covered California and give you some background, and then I'll give you some of the brass tacks on where we are and getting things set up. And then, we're going to have about an hour for question and answers from you. As you've heard, we're asking you to fill out these question and answer cards. We think some of you might have similar questions, so staff are going to bundle questions. If you all got one question, but we will ask the people that ask them to stand up so we can do follow-ups and have some engagement so we get to the question and answer. But we'll be taking them from these cards. Write down your questions on these cards. And we'll be roaming the halls. If you haven't done that yet, please do that. A couple of other things I'd like to do before introducing Assemblymember Jose Medina, who's going to sort of hosting this, is a couple of thank yous. First, we would not have been able to pull this off with our staff, and in particular, David Heitzman, Diane Stanton, David Panish, and Dana Howard, but also in particular, staff of Assemblymember Medina, Juan Lopez, Sabrina Cervantes, and staff of Senator Roth, who's going to be joining us, Violetta Aguilar-Wyreck. We appreciate their work very, very much. So, thank you. And importantly, again, thanks to you, which is you're taking times out of busy schedules because you recognize what we're doing is important, and it'll be shaped by your input, and it needs to be shaped by your input. You'll also note that there was fact sheets as you came in on the tables, and because of the crowds, we've already run out of some of them, which is good news, because you can get more at coveredca.com in English, in Spanish, in Farsi, in Mong. And so, we really do encourage you. If you didn't get one today, coveredca.com is the place to go to get more of those. So with that, I'd like to first introduce Assemblymember Jose Medina to welcome us here. And again, we're so appreciative of your staff's work for helping get this crowd turned out to launch what's going to be important for California. Assemblymember.
Thank you very much, Peter, and welcome to the UC Riverside Extension Center, and welcome to Riverside for this very important presentation. And it's an honor to have Covered California here for its first town hall throughout the state, and I would look forward to many more. I want to also acknowledge Senator Roth, who I think is still in Sacramento or on the way here, fighting with me for the UCR School of Medicine, and so he'll be here later on, and you'll get to hear from him. We're here today because of the passage of the federal health care reform known as the Affordable Care Act, and more people than ever will qualify for high-quality and affordable health insurance. In fact, California was the first state to create a health benefit exchange following the passage of the federal health care reform. And I'm sure that you are here because you have many questions. And my constituents have been speaking to me already and asking me, you know, how will this program work? And hopefully, that's what we're going to find out here today, and you'll get lots of answers to your questions. And with key parts of the Affordable Care Act taking effect in 2014, there will be a new way for California families, individuals, seniors, young adults, and small businesses to get health insurance extending coverage to 32 million previously uninsured Americans. Covered California is charged to help small businesses, individuals, and their families get access to health coverage. The marketplace is designed to help you find insurance that fits your budget. Covered California's job is tasked with making the new market work for California consumers. As many of you know, and as I have alluded to already, the inland empire faces a big shortage of doctors. And in order to meet that demands, we need to prepare for the next generation of doctors and researchers. And that's why on the very first day of my term in the Assembly, I introduced Assemblybill 27, which asks the state of California to fund the UCR School of Medicine with $15 million so that we can open the doors this fall and start producing and keeping the doctors that we need in this area, especially primary care physicians. But today, let us begin by focusing on the importance of outreach and education, learning how the rights, benefits, and choices provided by the Affordable Care Act affect you and this community that we live in, that we care so much about. Thank you for joining us today, and I hope that you will have an informative afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assemblymember. And I want to join you in appreciating UC Riverside for hosting this. I think it's an appropriate host, given the cutting-edge work of actually bringing to birth a medical school which is focused right at the core at addressing primary care coordination. So we're really appreciative of UC Riverside. We know that Senator Richard Roth will be joining us. I know that the state comptroller will be joining us, but I don't think he's here yet. Is that not yet here? Okay? I also want to acknowledge Rafael Ilosalde, the representative of Congressman Mark Tocano. Rafael, you here? There you go. Thank you very much for being with us. And Nathan Miller, representative to Assemblymember Mike Morell. Nathan, are you here? He was here. Moving on, is I'm going to go through a PowerPoint display, and I know people sometimes glaze over, but this is, we're a learning organization. This is the first time ever you've seen this PowerPoint, that anyone has seen this. So, look for the typos, look for the pieces, and look for your comments saying you got the order all wrong. So with that, we're going to dive in. So let's go to the first slide, and I'm asking to ask this to be a little audience participation. If you have health insurance through your job, raise your hand. Okay, that's the vast majority in this room. What's that mean? Go to the next slide. Well, if you answered yes, with the Affordable Care Act, keep your coverage. That's okay. You know, things don't change for you, except with the Affordable Care Act, there's new protections that you have. You know now, if you leave your job tomorrow, you could always get health care. Today, you don't know that. If you have diabetes, you have asthma, you leave your job, you may be uninsurable. Rules change, 2014. If you said no, there's a new future available for you with the Affordable Care Act. Affordable, guaranteed, high-quality health insurance, and it's on its way, and it's going to be here January 1, 2014. This is the biggest change in the American health care system since Medicare. 50 years ago, we said as a nation, seniors should have health care coverage. We will not as a nation stand by and allow our seniors to be literally dying in the aisles of hospitals, going into debt, and we all take Medicare for granted today, as we should. With the Affordable Care Act, we're saying that for the rest of American citizens, that health care is something we should all have, and we're going to have the tools to make that possible. It's a very big deal. So, what are the reasons people don't have health insurance? And I've got a surprise for you. It's not because there's not penalties today. That's not the reason. It's because they have pre-existing conditions. So in the private market, the individual market, people are denied coverage. It's because their employers don't offer it, but it's because they can't afford it. Affordability is the main barrier to people not having insurance. People want insurance. The Affordable Care Act addresses that by making health care affordable. So, the Affordable Care Act, go to the next slide, please, has a number of important improvements that will cut across the market at large. Guaranteed coverage, which means an insurer cannot say, "I won't take you because you have asthma, because a few years ago, you had a little twist in your knee." They've got to take everyone. Standard benefits. Right now, if you go online and say, "I'm going to search for a health insurance product," you can find in this area 80 products that you could maybe get if your health was okay, and they might range from $80 to $800, but you don't really know what you're buying. Under the Affordable Care Act, there's going to be standardized benefits, both inside Covered California, which we'll talk about, and outside. So consumers can make apples-to-apples choices. There's going to be no annual limits, no denial for pre-existing conditions, rates that are not based on your health status. So not only do health plans need to take you, they can't say, "I'm going to charge you more because you've got diabetes or asthma." These are big deal improvements. Next. Some changes in terms of the rules of the road. Large employers, which today, the vast majority of large employers, offer health insurance. Well, for the couple percent that don't, they'll pay a penalty if they don't offer affordable coverage to their employed population. Individuals will pay a penalty if they don't buy what is affordable health care to them. The penalties are small. They start off at 1% of your income and grow to 2.5%, but the reason for that is, if you don't have insurance come 2014, what that means is, you're making all the rest of us pay for your insurance. If you go to the emergency room, have something bad happen to you, and you say, "I didn't want to buy that insurance," we are all insuring you. The Affordable Care Act says, "We all need to be responsible. We all need to be part of the solution, all part of the insurance system." It also means, with the Affordable Care Act, dramatic expansion of coverage. As you heard from the Assemblymember, over 30 million Americans will be eligible for financial help to get them health care coverage. And that's going to happen in two ways. One is through insurance exchanges, which is what Covered California is, which will drive competitive plans and provide a vehicle for tax subsidies to help make health insurance affordable, and also expansion of Medicaid programs. In California, that's called Medi-Cal. Those two routes are going to expand the eligibility for coverage to about, and we'll come back to this, about 4 million Californians. So with that, I'm going to toss it over to Kim Belche, who has had 32 seconds to prepare and study these slides in advance, to give a review of who we are and who we're not. Kim?
Hey! Let's hear it for Riverside. I'm a transplant from Sacramento down to Los Angeles, and so I feel like I'm with my new people, you know? Southern California. So thank you for having us and for the opportunity to talk a little bit. Go back to that last slide. Am I looking at you, Dana? Okay. So who are we? I want to talk just briefly about some fundamentals about who we are, which is what we're about, what we're trying to accomplish. We talk as a board, we are a five-member board, about the importance of words. Words matter. And so, we have articulated for ourselves some important boards, words for us, in terms of our vision, what we're about, our mission, what we're trying to accomplish, and the values that kind of guide importantly our work. Most fundamentally, our vision. Our vision is that the Health Benefit Exchange, Covered California, is all about improving the health of all Californians by assuring their access to affordable, quality coverage. And then, we emphasize all because we recognize that while we are principally about the 4 or 5 million people, 3 or 4 million people that Peter touched on, we recognize that what we do in terms of how we purchase care, how we organize this marketplace, how we empower consumers, has the potential to drive and influence change in the marketplace broadly, and that is to the benefit of all Californians. Let us cue Dr. Bob Ross, one of our other board members. Bob, right on up. How we do our work matters, and you're going to learn a little bit this afternoon about how we do our work, how we structure our marketplace, how we use our purchasing clout and our role in the market, how we empower consumers in terms of information and choice has a huge impact on how successful first five. I've got a new job. Covered California. Fundamentally, our mission is about expanding the number of people who are uninsured, but how we structure the marketplace, how we empower consumers with information and choice, how we use our purchasing clout is going to give us an opportunity not only to expand coverage to more people, but importantly, also to advance our goals around quality, around health disparities, around affordability, around prevention and wellness. So Peter talks a lot about how Covered California, this new marketplace, is a very big deal. It is a very big deal. It's not just about the insurance card, important as that is. It is about how we connect people to coverage and do so in a way to empower consumers and catalyze and stimulate changes in the marketplace more broadly that will benefit certainly the people we cover through Covered California, but really more broadly. We have some core values that we're going to touch upon. It begins with the consumers, who are really at the center of all we do. It ends with results in terms of the accountability we want to be held to, not only in terms of coverage, but also in terms of affordability and quality and health disparities. Affordability is absolutely core to who we are and what we're about, and by how we ultimately will be measured. Cue the slide on affordability. This gives you a quick snapshot of some of the tools that are at our disposal as a part of the requirements and aspects of the Affordable Care Act, but also in terms of how Covered California is going to be doing its work. We have an opportunity through new tax credits and cost-sharing subsidies that will be made available to people based upon their income to significantly bring down the costs of the premium, that monthly payment for coverage, as well as to significantly lower the out-of-pocket costs that people will experience when they need to access care. We are structuring the benefits that being offered in a way that is mindful of the role that copays can potentially play as a deterrent to coverage, so we want to be sensitive to that. We intend to offer plans that will have no deductible at all, giving consumers a choice of those types of plans. Also, under the Affordable Care Act, there's a requirement that many types of preventative services that previously people had to pay a copay for to access will be available free. So again, as Peter noted at the outset in his comments, the fundamental reason why people buy insurance is not because they haven't been told to, it's because they can't afford it, either in terms of purchasing the premium, or even many people who are insured, but because of the cost-sharing requirements, either in terms of high copays or in terms of co-insurance, they can't afford to access the care for which they're covered. Next slide. So who are we, Covered California? You know, we are so fortunate to be in a state like California, where our conversation is not about whether or not to move forward with comprehensive health reform, but rather how? How to do it in a way that is consumer-centered, that is focused on improving, not just expanding coverage, but improving quality and affordability and addressing some very real issues around health disparities. So we are, this is hard work, it's complicated work, it's consequential work, but together we are undertaking implementation and not casting about wondering whether or not we actually will do it. Our state policymakers understood the promise of federal health reform when they stepped up in 2010, under Governor Schwarzenegger's leadership, to become the first state in the nation to put into place many of the essential building blocks to enable California to really move forward on the coverage, costs, and quality fronts provided through the Affordable Care Act. That leadership that began in 2010 has continued under Governor Brown's administration, who shares the goals that we do in terms of moving reform broadly forward and the exchange specifically in a very thoughtful and successful way. We were the first state in the nation that actually established, put into place the law establishing a health benefit exchange. Again, it underscored a recognition, reflected a recognition by state policymakers that this thing called an exchange, this new marketplace, had the power to be transformative, not only in terms of connecting uninsured and underinsured Californians to new coverage options, but could be structured in a way where this new marketplace could really contribute to a far more dynamic insurance marketplace that is grounded in competition based upon quality, on cost, on service, as opposed to insurers competing on the basis of trying to avoid the bad risk and take in the good risk. We are a dot com. We are coveredcalifornia.com, but we are a state entity. We are an independent state government. We are a little independent state entity. We're a little bit different than a traditional department or agency. We are governed by a five-member board appointed by the legislature and the governor. And importantly, and this speaks to one of our important values, we adhere to very strongly to the principle and value of transparency. As a public board, we do our business in public session. We have our meetings webcast in real time. We take questions from people from all over the state in real time, and it's a level of transparency and accountability that I think is very, very important to the work we do and to the shared ownership for what we are doing going forward. And finally, in terms of what we're putting on the shelves, these are brand-name insurance policies. And if you go to the next slide, you'll get just a very simplified graphic of what this new online marketplace looks like. And fundamentally, what this marketplace is about, it is about empowering consumers. It's about giving consumers a choice of high-quality plans. It is giving consumers information to inform their decision-making, informed by what they value in terms of provider networks, in terms of cost, in terms of quality. And it's structuring that choice. Peter mentioned the apples-to-apples comparison, this idea of standardizing benefits, so that consumers can really assess what plan choice offers them the most value. Not because a health plan happens to have just kind of tweaked a benefit model in a different way to attract certain types of benefit. Everyone's going to be choosing from a standardized benefit. You'll really be able to see far more transparently the differences in terms of cost, quality, and service. You'll see over to the far left, go back one more, because let's not forget the golden bear that is the state of California and the Medi-Cal program. We have a couple million people in the state who are uninsured. They're either eligible for Medi-Cal today and not enrolled, or they will become newly eligible under the new rules that were a part of the federal Affordable Care Act. And the Medi-Cal program is a very important partner, so for those consumers who come to this online marketplace, informed by the information they provide relative to income, household status, et cetera, those consumers will very quickly be able to determine what choices will be available through them, either through the Medi-Cal program or through the Covered California marketplace. And finally, I think very importantly, when our federal policymakers made a decision about federal health reform and what the nature and structure of coverage would be, they wanted to make sure that the kind of coverage benefits, health plan choices that were going to be offered to people who are today uninsured, as well as those who may be underinsured, that they would have the same kind of choices that members of Congress and people who work in Congress have. So members of Congress, if they are looking to purchase coverage, they similarly are, they are going to have to be purchasing something through this exchange. Is that right, Peter? Yeah. So they're going to be going through a similar marketplace at the federal level that California is creating here at home. How the federal government approaches their marketplace is going to be different than how we're approaching our marketplace. We have some very powerful tools here in California that our policymakers gave us, such as the ability to standardize benefits, which have the potential to be very, very transformative, again, with a focus on the consumer and empowering them with information and choice to drive their decision-making in a way that they're able to purchase the health plans and the providers that reflect their needs, their circumstances, and their priorities. And we're going to have a chance to hear more from you all in terms of some of the key questions that you have about this new marketplace, but I think we are now going to be hearing from Dr. Ross.
No, we're going to hear from me again.
We're getting from you again. It doesn't get much better than that. Okay. Peter, back to you.
Thank you, Kim. We will be hearing from Dr. Ross, and I do want to note, they don't say it, but the five-member board that actually that I report to, and note that it is an independent board. They don't report to the governor. They aren't appointed or voted for by particular stakeholders, so they don't represent hospitals or doctors or insurance agents or employers. They represent the 5 million Californians we're trying to get insurance for. And I just want to appreciate their unpaid work, which is diligent and constant. We have monthly board meetings, this thick material.
Excuse me, Peter. For the record, I always represent my mother.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for the record.
Okay. So what we offer, I'm going to note that in addition to the individual coverage, I do want to note that importantly, we will be offering coverage for small business, called the Small Business Health Options Program for businesses of 2 to 50 employees. And again, here, some small businesses can get tax credits to make health care affordable, but the most important thing there is offering employers a choice environment, so a small business that has five employees can come to us and say, "I'm going to pick the level of coverage. My employees, you pick any of the health plans in the marketplace." Some can pick Plan A. You'll note I don't name plans because we haven't selected our plans yet. Others can pick Plan B, Plan C. But let me talk about what we're not, okay? Well, we are not government insurance. We will be contracting with private, nonprofit, and for-profit health plans, community plans. We are not government doctors, hospitals, and pharmacies. We are not death panels. We are not socialized medicine. We are not raising the cost of everyone's insurance. One of the things we've seen over the last two years, actually three years since the Affordable Care Act passed, is a lot of disinformation and misinformation about the Affordable Care Act. What we have the opportunity to do together as a state is talk about the facts, and that's what we're going to be doing today, and that's what we need to do between now and January 1, 2014. So the milestones timeline, I'm not going to go through all the backgrounds on timeline to call out two key dates. First, January 1, 2014. This is a red-letter day for the nation. This is when the nation says, "Americans, all Americans, should have access to health care, and we're going to give them a leg up to make that possible." Covered California is the vehicle for that in California. There are 16 other states doing state-based exchanges, and the rest of the nation will have the federal government providing an exchange. Every American will have access to this. We are confident that we're going to be doing this as well or better, we're a little competitive here, than any other state. We can only do that if we all work together. The other thing that I'd note is January 1, 2015, and I may actually foreshadow a question. One of the questions that already came in was, "How are we funded?" We are funded right now entirely with federal money. The Affordable Care Act gives us a leg up, a federal grant to get started, sort of venture capital. The legislation that founded us says we cannot now nor ever get state general funds to support ourselves. So after we have this leg up from the federal government that stops on December 31, 2014, we have to be operating on our own steam, which is through plan participation fees that are showing value to health plans, that are showing value to consumers. So from January 1, 2015 on, we will be self-sustaining, operating on our own steam. So let's talk about what we do. And again, it's all about, as Kim noted, affordable, high-quality health coverage that's going to be guaranteed. But how do we do that? Three key foundations to our success. Okay. Number one, we have to offer affordable health plans. That affordability and health plans that we'll be selecting is number one. Number two, we've got to do effective marketing and outreach. And again, I talk about this misinformation and disinformation that's been out there. Between now and January 1, we're going to be out there in a big way doing marketing outreach. And third is smooth enrollment. If we have a great product out there, we do good marketing, and someone gets onto a website that's kluge or doesn't, can't get enrolled, we're going to fail. Every one of these three elements is critical to our success. So I'm going to go through each of those briefly. First, making care affordable. So when you talk about health care, and Kim addressed this, affordability is made up of two things. First, what you pay in premium, okay? 2.6 million Californians will get a federal subsidy, a leg up to make health care affordable, which for all the many of you that raise your hand that have employer-based coverage, you get a leg up from your employer. This is giving a leg up for the rest of Americans, to help them on an income-adjusted basis pay part of the premium. The second part of affordability is out-of-pocket costs, is your copay, your co-insurance, et cetera. And there's going to be standard benefits that limit out-of-pockets that are targeted to actually encourage the people to get the right care. Those are the two elements that come together to making care affordable. So how are we doing that? Now, this is a small print slide, the next one, which I'm not going to do this as an eye test, but some of the terms you're going to learn about coming up in this next year is what are called precious metal levels, that are saying, "The richness of a health benefit plan." A bronze plan, which is on the far stage right or stage left, is a plan that covers 60% of the care you get is covered by the plan, 40% out-of-pocket. Now, that's a pretty thin plan, but that's what a lot of people buy in the individual market today. A very rich plan is a platinum plan, which covers 90% of the care you provide is covered by the insurance, and 10% you pay out-of-pocket. Now, I'm not going to go through all the details of the details here. You can download this from our website. The important thing to note is a couple of things. First, you see all that yellow? That's covered with no deductible. That's saying that you don't have to think, "I need to spend $2,000, or $3,000, or $9,000 before it's going to be covered." We want to make sure that the out-of-pocket isn't a barrier to care. The other thing to note is, this is saying that at that silver level, visiting a primary care doctor, first preventive visit, free, as Kim noted. Primary care visits, $45. Well, this standard design that you're seeing here will be offered not just by every health plan that we will select to be in Covered California, but in every single health plan in the individual and small group market. So whether you're eligible for a subsidy or not, you have the ability now for the first time to say, "Apples-to-apples, I can compare and know what I'm shopping for." This is a huge boon to consumers that right now are going, "Is this particular cancer therapy covered or not? You know, what's going on here?" And so, we are moving away from the no got, the gotchas, and the gimmicks. The other thing you're seeing here is, go down to the bottom line, is maximum out-of-pocket. You'll see for the relatively thin coverage, $6,400. That's a lot of money. I want to be clear, $6,400 is a lot of money, but that's the maximum out-of-pocket that an individual is going to have to pay, no matter what happens. Now, you can hit sadly $100,000, $200,000, $1 million if something really bad happens to you. The prime reason for personal bankruptcies is health care costs. This is going to change the world for many Americans that are saying, "No longer you have to fear you're going to go bankrupt because of health care." Maximum out-of-pocket, across the board, $6,000. And that's a lot of money, but you think about people losing their homes because of health care. That's over. Next slide, please. In terms of affordability, and this gets into details... In terms of affordability, and this gets into details, for someone that makes, you know, $30,000 for a family of four, that $45 office visit may be something they say, "I can't do that. I got to put food on the table." There's a second form of subsidy in the Affordable Care Act. First, to help them buy their premium, and it's adjusted by their income. The second is, to help them pay their, for their visits. So, family of four that makes $35,000 would have a second form of subsidy to lower their cost sharing. Now, that family would have a $3 office visit co-pay. $3. That's a bus ride. We've designed these benefits in a standard way to think about making sure people get the right care at the right time, and the Affordable Care Act is designed to do that. Next slide. There's been a lot of talk around, what's the Affordable Care Act going to do to healthcare costs? Okay. Now, for the vast majority of Californians, it's going to reduce their costs. Now, the biggest way it's reducing costs is for those people that are going to get subsidies. And through those subsidies, their costs will go down between 40 and 90%, okay? And so if you see these populations of the folks, it's going to affect very positively. Now, on the far right, about 1.4 million Californians will not get a subsidy. And these are people who are uninsured today. I'm going to talk about the insured today in a moment. What they have for the first time, though, is a guaranteed issue, that they cannot be turned away. They're all going to get coverage if they want to buy it and if they can afford it. Now, there are also about 1.3 million Californians who have insurance today, who have insurance in the individual market today, who on average will see their rates go up about 20%. Now, average is one of those dangerous terms. You know, as you say, you can drown in a lake that's on average only three inches deep. You know, so, that 20% increase, some will have their rates go down, some will go up, some will go up more than 20%. And one of the things we need to do is educate people of the choices they can make to keep their premiums down. Which plan do they pick? What are their choices? So that's going to be the big things we're going to be seeing coming forward. Next, what do we do in terms of marketing and outreach? I noted, we've got affordable products, they're going to be available, they're going to be on the shelf this fall. We're right now going through our health plan selection process, and we are thrilled about the competitive environment of plans that want to be part of this marketplace. But we'll have those on the shelf. How do we sell it? Because this is a sell. You know, the penalty is a tiny thing. We need to make this available. Well, first, we're going to be maximizing enrollment through a number of things, is we need to be reaching out to educating Californians, to encourage them to step up, and assisting everyone on multiple levels. Next slide, please. I've talked some about who we're serving, the 5.3 million Californians, half with subsidies, half without, 1.4 million Californians newly eligible for Medi-Cal. It's a lot of people, and it's a lot of people compared to a lot of other states. Let's go to the next state to picture our state. Now, we're thrilled to be here in Inland Empire. You know, Riverside, San Bernardino counties each have more subsidy-eligible people than are eligible in the state of Colorado. There are 16 other states out there, state of Washington, state of Oregon, Vermont, and I get lambasted by staff of talking about how cute these states are compared to California. We are a very big state. And the story that I think you see in looking about where our Californians are, is we at Covered California will be having different health plans available in San Diego than there will be in Sacramento, and we'll be doing different marketing in Shasta County than we will be in downtown Oakland. We recognize the diversity of the state needs to be key to our marketing. Next slide. Our diversity is also ethnically, linguistically, culturally. We will be dividing, designing our marketing to reach out to the, about 50% of those that are eligible that are Latino, many of whom are Spanish-speaking. If you go to our website today, there are two complete full versions of our website at coveredca.com, a full, complete version of our website in Spanish, a full, complete version in English. That's our philosophy, that's our approach. In addition, if you go to our website, you will find fact sheets that we ran out of some of here today, but you'll find them in literally almost a dozen languages. We have a diverse state, we need to speak to that diversity. I'd note, in particular, I appreciate being here in Inland Empire, where there's a number of very large Indian tribes. We will be reaching out to the 80,000 subsidy-eligible Native Americans here in this area, the Aguascaliente Band, the Cabazon Band. We've been working, we actually have a advisory board specifically for tribal issues and Native Americans, but we have advisory boards that cut across reaching everyone. So how are we going to do this? Go to the next slide. Well, it's an all-play circumstance. We have to be working with labor, with employers, with advocacy groups, with health centers, with pharmacy, with faith-based organizations. We've released a grant potential to have community partners that we're going to fund. But I can tell you, we will not, and go to the next slide, please, $43 million, it's a lot of money. And that's going to have community groups to help the out on the streets. And I note that we had about a dozen applicants in Riverside and San Bernardino County. They will all not be funded, but we're thrilled about the interest that we've seen from across the state, of folks saying, "Yeah, we want some financial help, but more importantly, we want to be part of this biggest change in the American healthcare system since Medicare." And it's going to take that mobilization at every level to reach out. We will also be doing media. Now, you probably won't see us on the Super Bowl. We're going to be spending our money a little bit more wisely. I appreciate the Super Bowl. Now, if you are watching a telenovela on Univision, you might see us there, you know? If you're, you know, watching particular cable channels and you're in our income demographics, you're going to see us there. If you read particular newspapers, you'll see us there. Third, so now we've got the affordable products, we've done the marketing, we need to enroll people. Well, what's smooth enrollment mean? Well, go to the next slide. You know, we're going to have a great website, and it's going to be very good. But even with the best website, we know people need a human touch. We estimate that 85, or 80% of the people that enroll will need the hand of a human being to help them do it. We're going to be relying on insurance agents and certified assistants, we're going to be relying on our trained experts that are going to be answering the phone to help people do that, and it's going to be vital, because no matter how good a website is, this is confusing stuff. And I have been quoted as saying, "We're going to make this as easy as buying a book on Amazon." Well, okay, not quite that easy. We'll make it at least as easy as filing your taxes with TurboTax, though. Okay? And with that, I might need some help, you know? So having human beings that speak your language, that are in your community, if you're feeling a little confused, map it. You'll say, "Ah, here's someone that speaks Spanish a quarter mile away from me, and here I know they're certified, I know they're trained, they can help me out." Go to the next slide. This is giving you some of the pie chart demographics of where these are going to come from, but again, the left, the main message here is that we know it's going to take hands-on. Next slide. I noted, small business, we will be having the small business program. I would note that the world is changing for individuals. Individuals will have an obligation to buy insurance they can afford. Individuals will have huge subsidies available to them. Large employers have an obligation to buy insurance for their individuals. Small business doesn't change. 2 to 50 employers are not required to offer coverage. Many do, because they know that's what it takes to retain and keep their employees. Hallelujah, we will have a new opportunity for them. But as employers, they don't have new obligations. They will have new options through Covered California. Go to the next slide. And actually, go to the next slide. I'm going to go out, I want to get to questions and answers. So, I will note, you can go to us, we are, as Kim noted, we are part of GovernmentWora.com, that says something about our philosophy and approach. You can, and I should, ask you to like us on Facebook. You know, you can, you know, follow us on Twitter, you can see us on Google+. We will be out there a lot in the, in the months and years to come. And with that, I want to thank you again for having us here, and we're now going to turn to questions and answers. So thank you very much. So, remember, cards. You've been holding these up, we've been collecting them, and, and the staff have been sort of bucketing them in, and now we've got new questions saying, "What the heck did he mean by that? And he speaks too quickly." So I do recognize that, so. And what I'd actually asked, when I come to these, I'm going to ask the people that ask the question to stand up, not to put you onto the spotlight, but in case there are follow-up questions that you might have. So, first, Marilyn Monahan, could Marilyn please stand up? Marilyn? Marilyn, thank you. So, if you have access or are offered affordable coverage by your employer, can you opt out and purchase the individual plan on the exchange? This is a great question. Okay. If you have an offer of affordable coverage, you are not eligible for a subsidy in Covered California. Covered California and the Affordable Care Act is about providing coverage for those that don't have coverage. If you are offered affordable coverage, take it where you got it, hallelujah. If, however, your employer offers coverage, which is, and we can get a legal mumbo jumbo, but that is classified as unaffordable, which it costs too much for you to buy, given what you make, or is such thin benefits, doesn't really cover anything, then you could be eligible. And we'll have trained people to answer the questions, to help you figure out, "Given how much I make, and given what my employer offers me, might I be eligible?" We'll be asking those, those are questions. Now, we've got a mic, a roving mic. Now, we've got one ground rule, don't try to take it out of his hand. We aren't going to allow grandstanding, but we welcome follow-up questions. Marilyn?
But what if the coverage is affordable, and it is minimum value, but for whatever reason, the employee just wants to opt out of their employer plan?
Can't opt out. They got to keep their coverage.
They cannot opt out of their employer?
Cannot opt out. They got, they cannot opt out and get a subsidy. They cannot, they can opt out and come into Covered California unsubsidized, but they can't opt out and get the subsidy.
Okay, but they can come out unsubsidized.
Come in unsubsidized.
Subsidized. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. And I will actually seek to toss some questions to my board members here. Now, you know, the one thing that I'm going to try to not ask too many questions, if they're getting into really detailed specifics, which some are, about if I make this much or that much, what's this work out to? The good news is, on our website is a calculator. Go to coveredca.com, you can actually put in an income level and number of people in my family, and it'll tell you, what's your likely subsidy amount going to be, what are you eligible for? So one of the things we'll be out there a lot is actually the, the specific equations for what your income is and what you'd be eligible for.
Peter?
Yes?
Before we go on to the next question, I want to make sure that you were able to recognize John Chung, our state controller.
Oh, great. John, could you please come up and say a few words? Welcome to the controller, thank you very much. John Chung, state controller, thank you very much for being with us.
Well, good afternoon. I am absolutely delighted to share a few moments with all of you. I want to just thank all of you for taking the time to be here to work on a very important issue that impacts our state. We know that over the past few years, that we've had extraordinary struggle for so many California families, for the state government, and for our national government. We had a financial crisis, we had a recession, we had significant job loss, and one of the things that we have to do, and we're doing it under the leadership here of Covered California and your great state senator and state assembly member, who have convened everybody, but more importantly, it requires your vigorous participation, is to tackle a major issue that impacts not only our state, but it impacts our nation. And it's how do we handle healthcare inflation? How do we handle PACs, potentially avoidable complications, potentially avoidable care, potentially avoidable costs? And so that's why I'm so invigorated that Covered California made Riverside, made Inland Empire the first stop, because obviously, this is an area of extraordinary growth. Our future of California is heavily dependent upon the success of people in this region. One of the things we have to do is create employment and make sure that we contain costs, so that we can have younger people stay in this area to drive economic growth. So I just, I'm so excited. I really do want you to make sure that you meaningfully participate. As your state's chief fiscal officer, let me just give you a sense of the rapid healthcare inflation that's impacting the state. And at the bottom, the bottom line is frankly, you're paying with it, with your taxpayer dollars. So when I became your chief fiscal officer, in my first year, I did what's called an OPEP study, Other Post-Employee Benefits. And in my first year, and I did the study two years earlier than what required under government accounting rules, the cost over a 30-year period of time for 300,000 employees paid by 15 million tax returns was $47.88 billion over a 30-year period of time. Now, we could dramatically drop those costs if the state had money, but we didn't have savings. We could have dropped those costs by $16 billion. So instead of 47.88, it would have been 32 billion. Now, let me give you the subsequent numbers. It's 47.88, 48.2, 49, 52, 59, 62, and then two months ago, I, the latest study, $63.8 billion. That's how quickly healthcare costs are escalating. And so the work that Peter, Kim, Robert, their colleagues doing, tried to bring you into the system, and to prove the entire system is absolutely dramatic, and it will make a profound statement about our future. So I wish all of you extraordinary success. The most important part is, you have experts here, you're experts in the room, I see Connie in the back of the room. And so if we don't work on this together, we're all going to pay the consequence, and let's make sure that we don't have to pay the consequences, let's make sure that we have success together. Thank you very much.
California State Controller, John Chung.
Thank you very much, Sean. So, I actually want to note something about experts, is I have the privilege of really working with the great staff, and we now have about 180 people, many of whom are expert in things that I'm not. So there might be some questions that I can't answer, that I'd suggest even the board can't answer. And we now have an 800 number, which is up and running. Now, the 800 number, is it on any of our material? Hmm. We're checking. I think it is. If it's not, it's on our website at coveredca.com. And the reason I want to, I want to cue this up, is that we are not out there in public very much right now. I mean, we're, we're right now in an engagement process. Coming this summer, you're going to see and hear from us a lot, but that's a few months away. So, now is the time for people that actually kick our tires, call up. If you've got a complex question that we didn't get to today, or you didn't like my answer, call up, ask the question, and if you don't like the answer, send us an email. I'm serious, you are part of our QI team, our quality improvement team, is that we know that come fall, we are going to be answering tens of thousands of phone calls every single week. Now's the time to be, you know, laying it on. And so I appreciate the note about our expertise, and I'm noting that I don't claim to be an expert in everything, but when we have the trained folks assisting people in enrollment, and our folks on the phone, we'll be answering all questions right. So, I noted earlier, these three big buckets, affordable health plans and products, marketing and outreach, and then assisted enrollment. I'm going to sort of try to do questions in those buckets. So, on the affordable side, and I'd ask Dr. Rajesh Khar to stand up, please. Doctor, thank you. So, a question about network adequacy, and this is particularly related to pediatric subspecialties, but how is the network adequacy for pediatric subspecialty physicians addressed in the exchange with health plans? And what are we doing, what are the health plans doing to make sure they have adequate networks? It's a great, a really important question. So let me first give folks the broad answer, then, is, to be a licensed health plan, any health plan in the state has to show they have adequate networks, so people that have a whole range of conditions can get care. And we at Covered California are saying, as a starting point, we don't want to duplicate regulatory rules that health plans have. So, every health plan needs to be a licensed plan that has full networks. We are, though, going beyond that. And in particular, we're going beyond that with regard to what we call essential community providers, which is providers that have a history of serving the disenfranchised, low-income, Medi-Cal, uninsured, federally qualified health clinics, public hospitals, and we have specific requirements beyond the state requirements to make sure that there's a full range of providers to meet every individual's needs in the plan, so there's going to be a good mix of those essential community providers. So, the plans that have submitted bids to participate had to both show that they're going to have what's called network adequacy, to have specialists, including subspecialty access, across the board, but also how they have essential community providers provided. Doctors, that get close enough to answering your question?
I think so, yes.
Great, thank you very much for your question. And it's a, the thing that I really want to appreciate with the question is, as Kim noted, our board has said, the vision isn't about coverage. The vision is about care. The vision is about Californians getting the care they need. And so we are looking at contract with health plans and having terms of engagement that the plans make sure networks are adequate, that care will be provided. Another question, I'd ask Ann Donnelly to stand up. Ann? Do we see? Ann has channeled through a male voice. Okay, that's very clever. Might you be Tom? I'm guessing, okay. So this is Tom Donahue. So Ann's question channeled through Tom is, what are the continuity of care provisions for someone moving to the marketplace who currently has Ryan White care, for someone living with HIV? Can they keep their pharmacy the same? So that very important question is currently, in our patchwork system, there's a number of systems out there. One is called ADAP, which is the AIDS Drug and Something Program, Assistance Program. And it's, there's thousands of people with HIV and AIDS who get their care substantially through that. Many of those will become part of the marketplace. Some may go into Medicas, some may come into Covered California. We actually have a couple of things. First, I noted earlier that a sort of what we call table stakes is the standard federal state rules, which is that anyone must have continuity of care provisions, in particular, people with complex illness. And we look to those rules. This is an area, though, where our proposed contract terms are, we want to make sure we'll know who these people are. Plans will know who these people are, coming from programs like ADAP and others, to actually reach out ahead of time where they can, to understand what the drugs are that those individuals are on, understand that they've got providers in the network that know HIV care, that they can pick and select, and to make sure there aren't hiccups in terms of care provision relative to pharmacy use. Now, I can't get into whether it's a particular drug would always be covered or not, but we want to make sure the consumers that are moving into a new plan can know ahead of time, what are the doctors in that plan? Can they see the doctor they want? And will understand the pharmacy coverage, and if there would be an interruption in coverage, to engage their clinician to make sure they get the right care. Any follow-up on that, Ann or Tom?
So if Ryan White Clinic, for example, could someone within the clinic that isn't a certified assister tell them about the plans that are available that they've contracted with?
Tom, you've gone on to your second question, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very clever of you, Tom. So Tom had himself a question. Well, now, while you're there, so state that question while you're up, Tom.
So if I'm a Ryan White Clinic, and I want to tell people living with HIV about the plans that we've contracted with, in other words, so go to the marketplace, and this is an option that you can stay with us. If I'm not an assister, would I be in any violation of the rules?
Okay, that's a, let me answer that a couple of ways, which is, is first, and it's actually moving into a block of questions about the roles of assistors. So let me take this up. The roles of, I noted that 80% of the people that we think are in a role are going to need hands, helping hands of people to navigate this. Now, vitally, part of those hands will be currently licensed insurance agents, okay? But even those agents, and those that we certify, need to be certified to understand how subsidies work, et cetera. So the only people that can actually help an enrollment happen can get online and log in and say, I'm helping, you know, Juan, or Bob, or Sue, are going to be certified assistors, okay? Whether they're a licensed agent or someone that goes through a training program that will be coming up and running this summer, they've got to be certified, whether you're an agent or not, okay? If you're certified, it means you will not be saying, pick this plan. You will not be saying, and so in that example that Tom gave, if that staff person at a Ryan White Clinic wants to say, pick Plan X because we have a contract with Plan X and not Plan Y, they would absolutely not be able to be a certified assister and help with enrollment. They could give them that advice, as not as an assister, as saying, by the way, here's the plans we contract with. That's fine. But they cannot be certified by us because we think it's important that individuals get unbiased advice to say, here's the range of options. And then it's the consumer's choice. And I think this is actually, there's a very specific question from, now there's a question about, so Julie Nolan, can you please stand? Julie, thank you. So Julie's question, explain how an individual applies being an assister. And I would also ask Richard Nero to stand. Richard, if an assister can only help people fill out the application, how will we recommend a product? Okay, over there. So let me try to answer some of the, both of these at once, if I could, then we can see the follow-ups. First, how to apply. Today, you can go on our, we have, now, I know this gets a little murky, but we have two websites. We are a very transparent organization. We aren't trying to hide anything here. But coveredca.com has information for consumers right now, fact sheets for individuals, a calculator. At our corporate website, which is hbeex.ca.gov, and actually, one of our learnings is we need to be able to, in communities like this, have both of these websites available, we have a stakeholder page where you can click on and say, what's going on with the assister program? You know, what are the rules of the road? You know, when are you going to be doing trainings? When's it going to be open and available? And the application for being an assister will be available in about June, and we will then do trainings that will be starting in July, I believe. I might have that about wrong, but in July, the trainings will be about three-day trainings. They will be less long for licensed agents, because agents need to know some of the basics. But there's core elements that agents don't necessarily know about subsidies. So that's the basic timing. I think I might have addressed Julie's question. Did I, basically?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Will that application be online?
The application will absolutely be online. With regard to, yes, it will absolutely be online, and the ability to take the training will both be online and in person. We'll be doing trainings around the state as well as online training. The training will require taking a test to make sure you actually did understand what you're being trained to do. Also, though, to be certified, we're going to, we will very likely, we're actually required by federal law to have individuals go through background checks. Now, every one of the agents in the room already do that, have a background check. But people that help, that do that certified assistance role will have social security information, will have very, you know, personal information that could be abused. We want to make sure that doesn't happen, so it'll need to be background checked. So there'll be process, but you won't need to come to Sacramento to do it, okay? A question from Richard Nero is, if assistors can only help people fill out the form, who's going to recommend the product? And it's a great question. And a balancing act here is, you know, we're going to have this website that's going to ask people and go through a process of saying, what do you care about? You know, is your doctor in the network versus the premium, et cetera? The job of the assistors is to help people understand the choices in front of them. And again, we need counsel from agents of how do you make sure it's the consumer that's making the choice, not you, the recommender? The issue is, it's the consumer choice. And our board, if you look at our mission statement, which is actually on the back of every one of our business cards now, it says it's about creating a marketplace that consumers are making the choice that's right for them. So the role that we'll go through in the certified training program to become certified as an assister is that balancing act. And I'll note this, Tom asked a question about if I'm in an HIV clinic and I only got a contract with two plans, and I want to say only come to those two plans? You could say that. You can't be a certified assister. If you are an agent, and let's say, for example, there's five health plans we offer in Riverside County, and you as an agent only have appointments with three of them, okay? You have to give unbiased advice to pick any of those five plans neutrally. If you as an agent can't do that, don't try to be certified with Covered California, okay? If you as an agent only say, always pick Plan X because that's who I get a commission from, because that's how they get paid, we will decertify you. The issue is consumer choice amongst all the plans available. Does that address your question largely, sir?
Yeah, to some degree. I mean, I've been a broker for 31 years, and I know my existing book of business, and I know the clients in them. And, you know, when you, when you sell a plan, you've got to give people choice. And I think the exchange is going to do that.
Yeah.
But, you know, most people that have not had insurance probably have no idea even where to start. So what's, you know, how are they going to determine which plan? If there's five plans in Riverside, how are they going to determine the five, difference between the five plans, what plans their doctor takes, what they can afford, so on and so forth?
Yeah. I think that's, I think the way they're going to determine that is with help of people like you and other certified assistors, and a very good website that's going to help people understand what they care about most, and then it'll help them walk them through some of those choices. But it is going to need people to help them make the choice right for them. How much they care, is my doctor in the network? Is my clinic? Is my hospital? How do they weigh that against their out-of-pocket versus what they pay in premium? Thank you very much. Another question, what is the board's plan? Yeah, I like that. Let's give, it's the board a question for, for training assistors other than online, but I actually won't talk to this to Bob or Kim, is, again, we will be doing training, having training around the state, in person as well as online. And again, the training will cost nothing, but it's cost time. The three-day training will not be something you need to pay to participate in, but it's real-time, a real investment in people learning these skills, and there will be tests with it. And there will be both online as well as in-person training delivered around the state. Okay? A question about, and we have other questions coming up. Yes, there's a whole huge stack of them. Thank you very much. Is portal accessibility for enrollment? And this is again, we've now done marketing, people are coming online to enroll. Is Carolyn Joyce here? Carolyn? Carolyn, thank you very much. Can we have a mic ready? So is the Health Benefit Exchange portal accessible for people with disabilities? And it is now not as well as it should be, and it's getting better. There's different, what's called 508 compliance, and we want to make sure that the website is available for people with visual disabilities and others, so it can actually work for people. We talk about the both language access, but it's also access with disabilities. So absolutely, the portal will be available to work for people with a whole range of disabilities. Okay? Any follow? Great. Thank you very much for the question. Now, I love these general questions, but I'll jump over general first to go to governance in the board. And I will throw this to Dr. Ross. Is Covered California governed and overseen by the Department of Healthcare Services and CMS? Dr. Ross, would you say we're governed by them?
No, we're, we're an independent body.
By the way, Daniel, do you want to stand up, Daniel? Daniel Bello, who asked this question?
Oh, thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel.
We're an independent functioning and governing body, but each of us, each one of the five of us as board members, and then Peter's the executive director whom we hired, and if he doesn't do a good job, we'll fire his butt.
They tell me that daily. It's really comforting.
But no, we think Peter's doing a great job. But, so in my case, my appointment was made by Senator Darrell Steinberg, who is the leader of the Senate. So each one of us has, as a board member, has an appointing authority. But once those appointments are made, we are, we are free and clear to make the decisions that are in the best interests of making sure this program works right and works well. That said, that doesn't mean we function completely devoid of the world of politics, right? We have federal rules and regulations. We have existing state rules and regulations. One of the concerns for many of the health providers, the health plans and hospitals that will be involved with Covered California is that we not try to behave as a new regulatory agency. So we try to stay away from the business of regulating products, but just working under the ground rules of the federal legislation. So we are an independent body, but we also know that we can't possibly make this succeed without working well with consumer groups, with health plans, with health systems, with physician groups. And one of the, one of the ways we try to do that, as Peter mentioned, is to be as open and welcoming and transparent as we can be about stakeholder input, community input. And I just want to say, in closing on this question, my heart soars to walk into this room as our first town hall meeting, Peter, and to see this room full. I'm so glad we came to the Inland Empire first. You know, sometimes you do these things, you don't know whether eight people are going to be there or 80, but I was afraid that we'd have to start ordering pizzas for everybody to get people to show up. But thank you, thank you, thank you for taking your time to be here this evening.
And if I could ask Katie Green to stand up, and I'm going to actually throw a follow-up question to Kim on this. Katie? Where's Katie?
Here.
Over here, way over here. So Katie asked to...
I want to ask, do a follow-up.
But this, I want to tell you her question, and you can follow up. I'd ask you to both follow up and answer Katie's question, which is, tell us about the five members. If you wouldn't mind, Kim, talk about the other three who aren't here, and how they were chosen, and how much you are all paid. And you might want to say something about your background.
Got it. Do we need to, do we need to do anything?
Is that on? Is that mic on?
Yeah, it's on. It's on? Okay. It's on, great. So who are we? Just big picture in terms of governance, this is a different animal, and it is, it's a really great question to kind of call it out explicitly. As I said in my comments, we are an independent state agency. What does that mean? It means we're not part of an existing agency or department. Typically, when new programs are created by government, they're placed within an existing bureaucracy or entity. But in this case, policymakers understood how significant and far-reaching and consequential this new Health Benefit Exchange was, and how important it was that it be created with as much transparency and public accessibility and shared ownership as possible. So it's very unusual for a government entity to do its work really very, very much out in the open, governed by this five-member board. And so for people to say, oh, you know, the board, you guys probably just come right out and rubber-stamp decisions you've already made behind closed doors, anyone who's watched our board meetings knows, we are doing this together. We are struggling in real-time, and we are doing so not just amongst ourselves, but in partnership with a broader community, the couple hundred people who come to each of our meetings, as well as the countless others who participate via phone, through the webcast, through their public comment input, through our stakeholder processes. So it's a very different type of governance structure that maximizes accessibility, transparency, and I think most importantly, shared ownership, because together, we're working this out. It's a five-member board. It is comprised in statute by the governor's secretary of health and human services, serves as an ex officio, which means he or she serves by virtue of being the secretary as a voting member. And so that today is Secretary Diana Dooley, who serves as the chair of the board and is the current agency, Health and Human Services Agency Secretary. The governor has two other appointments, which Governor Schwarzenegger did before he left office. He appointed myself. I had previously served as Secretary of Health and Human Services Agency for the state, and he appointed Susan Kennedy, who was his chief of staff for many years, and who is now serving as a strategist and consultant in non-healthcare areas, to be sure. I currently work at First Five Los Angeles, which is a public grant-making and child advocacy organization focusing on children zero to five. As Dr. Ross said, Bob is the president and CEO of the California Endowment, which is the largest health foundation in the state of California that has a mission that is fundamentally very much grounded with our mission here at Covered California about improving the health status of all Californians by assuring their access to quality, affordable healthcare, and through broader population-based approaches. And the final member of our board is an appointee of the Speaker of the Assembly, and his name is Paul Fierer, who for many years served as the chair of a group called the Pacific Business Group on Health, which is a purchasing cooperative that works with or represents many, if not all, of the largest employers. And they work with health plans to advance very similar strategies that we're trying to do here at Covered California in terms of working, using our purchasing power to stimulate market reforms and innovations with health plans. So that's a little bit about the five members and their appointing authority. It's a terrific group of people, very, very dedicated and committed. We are, as Peter said, we are volunteers. We do this on top of our full-time day jobs, and we do so happily because we are all very mission-driven and public service-oriented, and we all understand that there are a few things more important, interesting, challenging, and consequential than what we are endeavoring together to do in standing up this new Health Benefit Exchange. If I could make one other just quick comment about partnership with Department of Healthcare Services, because they are a critical partner. They're an existing government entity. They oversee the mothership, which is Medi-Cal, which currently ensures about 8 million Californians. That's a number that is slated to grow as a result of what we anticipate will be a successful outreach and enrollment of people who are eligible today but unenrolled, as well as importantly, the expansion of coverage to people who today are totally impoverished, single adults who are not eligible. Come 2014, they will become eligible. Medi-Cal is a critical partner in terms of they have similar, we would anticipate there may be similar plan partners. We have issues around common products, delivery systems, but most fundamentally, we share a common bond in terms of the populations that we serve. People who have moderate incomes or low incomes, their incomes aren't static. People move around a lot. We anticipate that roughly nearly a million people a year will experience an income change that will move them from Medi-Cal eligibility up to eligibility for the exchange. And so that's one of the reasons why we're working very closely with the Department of Healthcare Services, as well as with the legislature, to create something called a bridge plan that will afford those individuals whose income goes into the exchange range the opportunity to stay with the health plan they're currently in within the Medi-Cal program. So I won't get into details on that, but it's an example of how we recognize we have a common purpose in terms of our overarching goals and objectives, but most fundamentally, we're going to be providing coverage and care to many of the same people as their income and circumstances change.
Great. Thank you, Kim. And the only thing I would add to that question is, or add as a response, do we cover your, I think we covered your question, okay?
I didn't get the term, and also, I wondered why you chose to make the board just five.
That's a, it's a great, a great question. The terms are in statute, and they were staggered, so they're basically four-year terms, though one of the initial board members had a two-year term and was Paul Fierer, and then he has been reappointed by Speaker Perez. Your question about why five is really good, because there was a lot of pressure on the legislature to appoint a very large board, one that was, would have like a representative for business, and a representative for labor, and representatives for doctors, hospitals, for business, and a representative for labor, and representatives for doctors, hospitals, nurses, dentists, health plants, et cetera. And some states have pursued governing structures much like that. California tried to be, we, those of us who were involved in creating the legislation, tried to be evidence-based and informed by California experience. And we have an existing entity called the Managers' Medical Insurance Board that some of you may be familiar with, that has overseen the Healthy Families Program for many years. It's a five-member board. And those of us involved, a diversity of perspectives, all looked to that as a very, very positive example of how a small board can be very nimble, and can work together in a very positive collegial and constructive way, and that it was actually better in terms of advancing, or more productive in terms of advancing our outcomes, to not have specific prescribed slots, but rather say, you know, what we care about is people who have experience, expertise, commitment. We're not looking to fit people into specific categories, but we're looking for people who bring overall knowledge, awareness, and commitment to these issues. And so all of us had to meet certain threshold criteria, but it was really grounded in healthcare expertise, health policy, health improvement knowledge, and that's what we all reflect.
The one thing that I would add, one, it really is a great board, not just because they haven't fired me yet, but because they really worked their butts off and wrestle with really, really tough issues. And again, do it in a very public way, but it's tough issues. The other thing, I want to come back to Daniel's question about, are we overseen by CMS? So CMS is the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. Within CMS is something called the Center for Consumer Information and Insurance Oversight. They're the ones that have provided us the funding, and they're the ones that HHS, which is the Health and Human Services Agency federally, has said, California, you've got your stuff together, you can have a state-based exchange. We think we can trust you instead of having to come in and do it ourselves. So we, they do check what we're doing. They check regularly. They make sure that our work on developing the websites is going okay, our training is going okay. So there is an oversight role that the feds, so to speak, have, because we're implementing a federal law. We're implementing something that will benefit all Americans, and if we don't do it right, the feds will say, we'll step in and do it. Now, we are very confident we're doing it right. They have given us high fives at every point along the way, but they do look over our shoulder. I want to pause to note that Senator Roth has joined us. I really want to appreciate Senator Roth. Thank you for, again, the senator and his staff, Vialletta helped bring you here and hosted us, and again, we're so thrilled to be here at Inland Empire for our first meeting. Thank you, Senator. A number of questions, I'm going to ask three people to stand at once, though not on top of one another. David Rodriguez, can David stand? And I know people that hold the mics are going crazy, and where do I go with the mic? Is Chad Montgomery, can Chad stand up? Where's Chad? Oh, you guys are clustering together. Okay, this is interesting. Is Devak Marcel, did I get that right? I might have, Marisaw, Mariskal? Mariskal, pardon me, excuse me. Okay. And so questions here. When will rates for each plan carrier be released to the public? Which health plans are going to be in the marketplace, and when's it going to be public? Which have applied, and when will the incomes for subsidies be checked after enrollment? So that's the second question I'll come back to. So first, on the plans, is about four months ago, thirty-three plans said they intended to bid across the state. Now, it's different parts of the state, some plans in some regions, some in others. All of them have not bid, but we are right now engaged in a confidential competitive bidding process. And it is confidential. We aren't saying what plans have stepped up to bid, but I have said, and we have said, that it represents plans that currently serve the vast majority of individuals in the individual market. It includes plans that are Medi-Cal plans. It includes both statewide and regional plans. It's a very good mix of plans. We're in those negotiations now. Sometime around mid-May, we anticipate closing those negotiations and having tentative certification of plans that will be in Covered California. I say tentative, because at the point we do that, we will then have hopefully closed out on our core negotiations, including rates, and then the rates get sent to the regulator for review. In California, there's a reasonable most review that regulators do. We will then send those rates, well, we won't, the health plans will send those rates to the regulator for review, to be back to us hopefully by the end of June, so that July 1, we will have final selections of plans covering every part of the state. So I won't tell you who the plans are. But we, it's a good mix of plans, and again, we're thrilled about it. You will know who the tentative selections are by mid to late May, okay? So did that cover those parts of the questions largely? Another question from Ms. Marisal, did I get it closer that time? Okay, but Mike over there, which is, how will the income subsidies be checked after initial enrollment? Now, this is a compound question, unrelated to the first part, but it's a really important question. Consumers will come into Covered California, and they will have help from someone in their community or not, and they'll put their social security information in, and it will literally, instantaneously ping against social security. It'll ping against the IRS and say, when you filed your taxes last year, you said you made twenty-two thousand dollars. We are doing testing today. The tests are working, okay? And it's going to say, this is my income today. That's what your subsidy will be based on. Well, people's income changes, okay? If your income changes, at the end of the year, it's not based on what you guessed your income was going to be. The subsidy will look at what you actually made in 2014, okay? So we will be communicating regularly with the consumers to say, has your income changed? Remember, you need to report that, because it'll change what your subsidy eligibility is, okay? We will actually be doing periodic, and we're looking at, is it every six months or every quarter, where we do what's called, now, this is a terrible term, and I need my communications people to help me out with this, it's called trolling, which is actually looking around for the data to say, oh, Bob's income just went up, you know, from EDD, or down, to say, and then give them a warning that says, you're now eligible for a bigger subsidy. If you want, you can actually get a bigger subsidy applied starting next month. Or your income went up, be warned that if you don't lower the subsidy amount, the IRS is going to say you owe us a little bit of money, okay? So having people informed about how this works, this is a, the IRS is giving people that leg up that we get as employed people every single month. So it's not waiting till the end of the year, but it's advancing that credit so it can go every month to reduce their monthly premium. But again, that's why we'll be updating people regularly and engaging them, okay? I got a two thumbs up on a good answer. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go to another question about our fees, which is from Michael Bernardini. Bernardini, is that close? Close enough, I got a close enough, okay. Bernardini, si, okay, grazie, grazie, prego, okay. So will the California exchange be adding any fees to the insurance plan offered in Covered California? If so, how much? What percent? Really good question. I noted at the beginning that we are right now operating with federal funds. I call it sort of a, you might think of it as public interest venture capital. It's an investment that we are all paying for. This is tax dollars at work, I want to be clear. But it's an investment in affordability for the nation. So that's getting us our leg up, getting us started. After January 1, 2015, under our own steam entirely, and it is absolutely on an assessment on the plans. So the estimate is about 3% of premium, okay? Which works out to, now, there's someone in the room who knows it exactly, but I think it's about thirteen dollars a month, okay, which is covering our expenses. I want to note, though, and that's real money, and we think about this, back to the bottom line being affordability, we had work done by an actuarial firm called Milliman to look at what's going to happen to rates in 2014. Now, we are adding a fee onto what plans pay. In addition, though, we're making life easier and simpler and less complex, and lowering marketing costs. The estimate is that through administrative simplification, through reduction in marketing costs, through having standard benefit designs, plans' costs will be reduced by about four and a half percent. We're the cheapest date in town. So we will absolutely have a fee that's going to be part of what plans will be helping support us on an ongoing basis, but our goal with the plans is to lower costs for consumers. That get, great, thank you very much. A couple, and we're doing good on time, and I want to note, people looking at the clock, we're going to go about another fifteen minutes with questions, back and forth like this, and then to give the last ten or fifteen minutes of wrap-up for some observations from both Ms. Belchay and Dr. Ross. So, next question, Edmund Haronian, Edmund? There you go, sir? Is what happens if Covered California runs out of funds before January 1, 2015? Sort of an appropriate follow-up for this question. So we've developed a budget, and the feds have funded that budget. They have also said, back to operating within guardrails, that if we've got it wrong, we can go back to them, and say, you know, we need more money. Now, they are not, as you know, and we heard from the controller, the state of California has tough budget times. So does the federal government. If we come back and say, we need a national ten million, twenty million, a hundred million, they're going to say, prove it, because we need to show that you're being cost-effective with your funding. But they've committed to our success. They've given us the funds to date that we think are enough to run all the way through the end of the year, but they've said they're evidence-based. If we've got it wrong, we can go back and ask for supplemental funding to make it all the way to 2015. Does that address your question? Yeah, a little follow-up there, please.
Thank you so much. Well, it's not a follow-up, but-
Oh, well, it's a new one. Well, that's a trick. Wait a minute, we'll take this one, but don't everyone else follow this idea, but go ahead.
How many individuals do you anticipate to enroll until the deadline, which is March, I believe, March 31st, right?
It's March-
And if you don't reach that goal, is there a possibility that you extend the open enrollment?
Great, that's a great question. So now, you set a bad precedent, because now I think the follow-up questions will be equally good. Let me answer that question with a little education point. Okay, starting in fall, we're going to start what's called open enrollment, okay? And it's going to go six months. It's going to go until March 31st. This gentleman has this down. Now, I noted this thing called guaranteed issue, that a plan has to take people regardless of health status. That's in Covered California, which is the only place you can get the subsidy, but in the individual market at large, every plan during that period of time has to take anyone. That's what's important about open enrollment, okay? If someone says, you know, I don't really think I want to get insurance, I'll pay the penalty, that's okay, and they change their mind in June of 2014, we at Covered California and health plans are going to say, sorry, you cannot get insurance with us. Now, if you lose your job, you can get insurance. You know, if you get divorced, you get insurance. Those are what are called special circumstance. But open enrollment is really, really important. It's a period that you can get the subsidies and you can guaranteed issue, okay? Either in Covered California, the subsidies, or any place in the market, the guaranteed issue. You lose that on April 1, 2014. So that's just a background explaining the importance of this period. You know, we've estimated, and I don't remember the specific numbers, and it's in one of our 800 PowerPoints, that, you know, by the end of open enrollment, we anticipate having about a million Californians enrolled, okay? About a million. Now, I hope we surpass that. If we don't have that many, we are not extending open enrollment. Open enrollment is set in federal rules, federal law. If we don't have that one million people, though, we'll have learned a lot from what didn't didn't work in marketing. And there's another open enrollment period, come October 1, 2014, that's going to be three months. So the starting gate period, the six-month open enrollment period, because we've never done this as a nation before. After that, every year, now, many of you, now, who is, as a, with your employer has an open enrollment period in your job? People have that? So people, everyone's going to learn this. Open enrollment time for individual coverage. It's the time you can say, oh my God, now's my window to step in. So 2014, we're going to have six months, the beginning, end of 2013, and the first three months to get in first time, but then every year from here on, three months of the year, October through December 31st, is going to be open enrollment period. If you don't step in during that time, you're running the risk of actually being uninsured, okay? Thank you very much. So another general question, where will these PowerPoints be available? Can I get them? And yes, you can, after we clean up a couple items and change the order of a few things. But so these will be available, though, check in not at our consumer website, but at the one that we hide from you in our non-transparent mode. Now, I will note that if you type in in Google, or another search engine, no endorsement, Covered California, the good news is, we are the first things that comes up. The second thing that comes up is our business site, this HBEX thing. So if you didn't write it down, don't worry about it. Search for us. Okay, access to care, and this is, again, I love coming back to the care issues. Can Tony Yang please stand up? Tony? Tony's over here. So how do you think this will impact utilization of emergency rooms and urgent care? Now, this is a, you know, so many of these questions are great questions. Today, people that are uninsured get care at the worst place to get it, at the most expensive place to get it, at the emergency room. By getting people insured, the Affordable Care Act says preventive care, free. We have developed these designs to mean that people will get the right care at the right time. We absolutely anticipate that there will be an impact in emergency rooms, impact on urgent care. How much, we aren't sure. As an evidence-based organization, we are doing a lot of work to measure what our impacts are, but also measuring what's happening in the healthcare system at large. So we are sure there's going to be reductions in emergency room use. How much TBD, we'll be measuring and looking at it, but it's an important question, because people getting the right care at the right time is not going to the emergency room. For sixty percent of what people go to the emergency room for, it's getting a primary care that's well-coordinated, it's getting team-based care. And that's what we're working with, the health plans we're contracting to make sure is what people get. That address your question, Tony? Great, thank you very much. Gretchen Walker, Gretchen? Gretchen? Gretchen's back here. Gretchen, will licensed midwives, different from nursed midwives, be an approved and recognized healthcare provider under the bridge and exchange programs? How do we, healthcare providers, stay involved in the process? Well, I'm not sure, but I sure as heck think so, first to your first question, of licensed midwives. We aren't, is the networks of care that the providers have, that the health plans have, but I want to be clear about one thing, is that the health plans, we don't contract with providers, okay? Covered California will be contracted with health plans, that will have networks of providers providing what are essential health benefits. These essential benefits absolutely include both prenatal and maternity care. The extent to which licensed midwives are part of the networks of the providers that the plans have, I believe, is a, well, I'm not sure what the answer is. So I love being stumped a little bit, but I would, so I'm not even going to say, I guess so, but absolutely, the care provided by midwives would be covered. And call our 800 number, and you'll find out the answer. The other question is, but the thing I appreciate with the question is, is often we get questions about, and I say this with respect to doctors, that it's all about the doctors, it's not about the doctors. It is, it's about nurses, it's about midwives, it's about pharmacists. And when we talk about care delivery, it's by a whole range of providers. So the other part of the question I can answer readily, how do we, healthcare providers, stay involved in the process? We have a number of ways. Kim noted that we have a very, very public board processes, and you can log on to our business website and sign up to get on our list, where we'll notify you of discussions we're having, of issues coming before the board, of, for instance, our quarterly meetings of our Plan Management and Delivery System Review Committee. We have a committee that has providers, consumer advocates, health plans, that advise us, advise the board on how we shape policy. Those are open meetings. We welcome people to sit in on those meetings and provide comments, okay? And I, it's important to be stumped a few times, so I appreciate that. And actually, we will follow up with you with an email, because we appreciate you giving the emails on this, and we will follow up on that. There is, now, I do apologize, there's so many questions here, which we will not be able to answer all of. And so if you're grumpy that you didn't get yours answered, we will seek to respond, and actually, we won't just seek to. If you wrote clear enough that you've got an email that we can read, now, now you're going to say, oh, you should have told us that ahead of time. We will send you an answer. And we'll, again, this is great, not just practice, it's real issues. We appreciate your time, we will respect that time by emailing you answers to every one of the questions that are on here, and we've got our service center staff training for them. So this is a question about the penalty. So is there a penalty to accompany with more than fifty employees for canceling coverage and sending employees, this, I can never, is that a greater or less than? I never remember that. Well, either way, let me answer it either way. So Catherine, you can actually, where's Catherine Bander? Catherine? There you go, Catherine. Did you mean over or under fifty?
Under.
Under fifty, thank you very much. I always have trouble with that thing, which direction, okay, so there. So is there a penalty for a company under fifty employees canceling coverage and sending their employees to the exchange? No, no, there's no penalties for businesses under fifty, covering or not covering care. The issues of small business, you know, they are struggling with healthcare costs. They step up, many of them, and do what I think is the right thing, and what we in the Affordable Care Act think is the right thing. Staying in the game, providing coverage, it supports retention and a range of issues. But penalties do not apply in any way, if you're covering today, not covering, under fifty, there's no penalties in play, okay? Thank you very much, and thank you for educating me. I'll get those dashes.
Bob and I are seated on time.
You, okay. Kim and Bob have seated their time- Kim and Bob have ceded their time to doing closing wrap-up session, comments to keep going with questions. They like seeing me sweat, I think. This is sort of the, this is, oh, thank you, Bob and Kim. Okay. So, a couple of questions about the penalties for large employers. First, I'd have H. Green stand up, and also Edward Strickland. So, and this may be the, there, okay? And there's a gentleman here, here and here. So, first, is the $2,000 or $3,000 penalty only triggered when an employee receives a federal subsidy through the individual extreme, exchange? Edward is? You, Edward? Okay. The other question is, you said that large employers should cover if not, they'd be penalized. How? What about employers that offer coverage and they include paying for their employees? Okay. This is great. So, so, there will be a penalty to large employers. And how this is going to work is, an employee has to first avail themselves of a subsidy in Covered California. So, if an employer doesn't offer coverage to some of their employees, but the employees don't knock on our door and get a subsidy, they will not have a penalty, okay? The formula for the penalty, I will confess, gets pretty complicated, because, you know, it's the first 30 people, doesn't count this way, and others it counts for. Long and short, though, if you're a large employer, you have to offer affordable coverage, okay? And affordable means, it relates to the percentage of the income it costs your employee to pay for their share of the premium, and it needs to be decent coverage. If you aren't doing that, that person's going to find us. They're going to find us, and when they find us and get coverage through Covered California, that large employer will be quote-unquote eligible for a penalty. Now, I think Edward has a follow-up. He's waving that hand around saying, "Give the mic over here." Okay, that, that, okay, so...
Eligible for a penalty if they're seeking subsidized coverage?
If, if they're eligible for that penalty if the individual that works for them gets a subsidy through us.
Okay. So, just to be clear...
Let's do that.
The penalty only occurs, okay, if the plan, if the plan is unaffordable, and the employee goes to the exchange...
Correct, correct.
And they don't qualify for a subsidy, there is no penalty. Correct.
That, I believe, that is correct, but I think we're dancing on the head of a pin of likelihood, because if the plan is unaffordable, I would bet dollars to doughnuts, they would be subsidy-eligible in the exchange.
But the, but the key really is, if a subsidy is received, that's what triggers...
That's what triggers it, absolutely. But importantly, very importantly, though, the moment that trigger occurs for that large employer, then the penalty is on all the individuals that don't have affordable coverage, not on just those that get subsidies. So, so, the, the trigger event, oh, now he thinks I'm wrong. Okay. Well, we'll follow up with this amid the, with the right answer, then. He, well, we got one that says I'm right, one that says I'm wrong. I love this. This is great. So, I, I do believe that it is the case, that, but I'm, I got two nods on the right. Okay, so, and wait, hold on, wait, wait, timeout, timeout. Here is my belief...
[laughter]
That, hallelujah, I believe, that, 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 okay, if you are a large employer, unaffordable coverage, and an individual, you know, and you, let's say you have 3,000 employees, of whom 400 do not have affordable coverage through you, okay? We're there, that, they've got, you know, whatever the, the income mix is, that for some, it may be affordable, others not. And, and one of them comes to our door and gets a subsidy, the penalty would be levied against the whole 400 people with the bizarre calculations. Now, now, I will note, I will note, this is our first town hall, and I am very clear that Mr. Strickland disagrees with my interpretation of the law.
[laughter]
And someone else does, too. Does anyone agree with my position?
[laughter]
Yes. We have another person who agrees with my position. This is why you should call our 800 number, to get the clear, detailed answers. But I would say, that if I may, that I, I'm, I'm pretty darn sure I'm right, but I appreciate the question. You, we're, sit on down, and we'll talk to you later, okay? Gosh, gee. Okay. Is, I want to go to a subsidy question that I can answer. Jeez, jeez. Okay. Can I have Joe stand up? Joe Henahan. Joe's standing in back there. Joe, I, I'm glad to say that I can answer this question.
Edward works for me.
Pardon me?
Edward works for me.
Edward works. Okay, fine, thanks, yeah. So, Joe asks, "Have the subsidy amounts been determined for the individual in shop exchanges?" And, and this is, is, is one of the ahas we had, which is, yes. For the 2.6 million people who are subsidy-eligible, we know exactly today what their subsidy amount is. Doesn't matter what the premium is, for the vast majority of them, because the subsidy is based on a calculation of their income. So, if you make $20,000, we know that the most you will pay for a silver plan is $22. That may not be the right number, but whatever, we know what that is. Doesn't matter what the premium is. The subsidy is what you will pay. The subsidy, the feds will pay to the plan, we don't know. But so, I used to turn this upside down. From a consumer perspective, we know today what they will pay. The amount of the subsidy, we don't, until we get the premiums in. So, I'm turning that upside down a little bit. Does that make sense?
So, clarification.
John or Ed, whichever I'll call you?
Joe.
Joe, there you go, Joe, there you go, Joe. Thank you, sorry about that.
Close, close. So, the, in the individual exchange...
Yes, and then I'll come to shop, thank you.
Based upon the federal poverty level limits, we know that this particular person would pay $22 for...
Exactly right.
Or if they have a higher income, 40, for whatever the figure is.
Right.
Regardless of what the premium is...
Exactly right.
And the federal government will then provide the subsidy, I'm asking, to the exchange or to the carrier, either way.
It, to the carrier, not to the exchange.
To the carrier, therefore, the amount that the insured is billed is the 22 bucks.
Exactly.
Second question, in the shop...
So, I want to pause, if I want to repeat this, if everyone understands this. So, the, you know, that person that makes $20,000, their share of the premium, we know today, $22, $30, $60, whatever, it goes up by income. What we don't know is the size of the check the federal government is writing that goes each month to the health plan that person picks. And that's what we're negotiating right now with the plans. We want it to be affordable, because that's money that's collectively out of our, you know, tax dollars, and it lowers costs for everyone. I want to note also, though, this is another piece, that the premiums that health plans will be charging in Covered California are the same to everyone, regardless of the income level, same premiums, and the plans are offering those exact same products at the exact same premium outside of Covered California. So, if you're not eligible for a subsidy, we have your back, too. Apples to apples, you can make the same plan choices, same premiums, outside of Covered California in the general wild-willy individual market. There was a follow-up question regarding the shop, now, still on individual?
Last part of the individual.
Okay.
So, the dollar amount that the insured will pay is published based upon the federal poverty level.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Second question. In the shop, is it a credit to the employer for the premiums paid? And has that credit been determined? And how does that, how is that credit paid to the employer, or to the exchange, or to the carrier?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So, the support to make healthcare more affordable for small business is in the form of a tax credit that is paid to the employer. So, it's, it's different than, it doesn't go directly to the health plan, rather, an employer that is eligible for a tax credit. And it's not all employers, it's small employers, 25 or fewer, and the subsidy, the tax credit, is bigger if they have lower-income employees. So, there's a formula for this, this tax credit formula. The thing that is different in 2014 is, and these tax credits are available today, they are one of the, the most unutilized tax credits in existence. There are 12 businesses in California that have used it. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. There are thousands that have. I should, I should be careful. I'm, here we got, be broadcast all over, Peter Lee says whatever, no. There are, there are thousands of small businesses that have used it. The tax credit value goes up in 2014. It's worth more money to small business, and the only way you can get that tax credit, though, is if you buy through the shop. So, you must buy through Covered California, which means you must be offering your employees choice. You must be able to give your employees the ability to choose amongst five health plans. Those are the employers that will get that tax credit that goes to them.
Last part, last part of the question. When does the employer receive the credit money, and how long are those credits in place for the next...
Great. So, when does the employer receive the tax credit money, and how long can they be in place? I know 50% of the answer, Joe, is the tax credits last for two years. And so, whenever you start it, you can get those credits for two years. I'm not sure when and how the payments come. But since you didn't put your email down, no one will answer that question to you.
[laughter]
Okay. You snooze, you lose, Joe. There you go, okay. [laughter] You want to get paid? Okay, fine. Okay, great, there you go. Okay. A, a couple of questions from agents and brokers. And this is a, I'd ask Chris, Christopher Huckins to stand. Christopher? Christopher, thank you. I'd also ask Richard Asensio. You guys are supposed to stand together. They're pretty good, pretty good, that's good. Okay. And, and also, well, let me do those, these two. So, first, Christopher, "Why are agents disqualified from the Assister Navigator Program?" And from, that's from Christopher. From Richard, "What functions do you see that brokers will be able to play in the California Exchange? Specifically, what requirements and limitations do you anticipate them to be subjected to?" Hell, that's subjected to, it really sounds kind of brutal. What kind of group do you think we are? Jeez. Okay, first, the federal law says that the only individuals that can be assisters or navigators are those that don't receive money from insurance companies. So, federal rules, we operate within these guardrails. The federal rules also give us the ability to say, "Who do we want to have helping people enroll in Covered California?" And our board has said, "We want insurance agents to be core partners." And so, having agents be able to do enrollment, now, again, I noted earlier that the, the rules of the games, this comes back to the, what you are subject to, so to speak, is, right now, agents actively, the gentleman over here, recommend particular products. Now, I think usually would recommend products for which they get paid to sell, okay? A different, being a certified agent to be helping people make their choice in Covered California, is agents will have to agree that they're going to describe equanimity balanced weight every single plan that is available in that region, whether or not they get a commission. How agents will get paid is not by Covered California, but by the plans that individuals enroll in, that they do have an appointment with to get a commission payment. So, I noted this early, but it's important to understand, is that we think it's vitally important to have agents be part of the all-hands-on-deck getting people enrolled. But if an agent has a, what's called an appointment with, you know, four plans in Riverside and not with the fifth, and never ever, someone never signs up with that, that plan, and that's not what's happening, every other assister out there has 35% of the people enrolling with that plan, we're going to be looking over that agent's shoulder. And so, how we will subject them to, and we don't think this will happen, will boot them. Now, that's not like saying they can't drive. Well, sort of is, like putting a boot, is it, they will not be able to be a certified agent and selling business through Covered California. We don't think that's going to happen. We think agents are going to step up and say, "We'll provide counsel across the board." Recognizing their compensation is different and structured differently. Did that basically address your two questions? I got one? A follow-up? Okay, but, but thank you. Don't, don't hold that, let's go with that.
Okay. [laughter] I understand that the federal government has come up with conflict of interest requirements. Will California be subject, I said not the wrong word, but apply the same conflict of interest rules that they're applying for the navigators in their program as they would for the state of California?
Yeah. Well, a couple of things. We, again, the, the assisters program, and this gets a little wacky, but what you'll hear, what we talk about mostly in California, is a, is a certified assisters program. And to be certified, you can't have conflicts, including receiving money from insurance companies. So, this comes back to the question of why insurance agents cannot be assisters. So, conflict of interest, we will absolutely have those provisions, but that doesn't bar prohibit us from having agents doing enrollment, following certified rules that we will have. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. We have, now, I actually do need to note, it's five minutes, too, and I am going to ask, now, I know there's 162 more questions we can't get to, there aren't quite that many, but I am going to actually stop answering the questions, and we'll ask Dr. Ross and Kim to say a couple words of thanks that I'll, I'll lead off with, is, this has been great. We've appreciated the opportunity to hear from you, both your comments and questions. This will only work if it works with all of Californians stepping up and making it work together. And you joining us today are evidence of why we're so confident that California's going to lead the nation and are going to have millions of Californians insured. So, I'd like to ask Dr. Ross and Kim Belche to say any other closing remarks, and then we can send you on your way.
Sure. Thank, thank you very, a round of applause for Peter Lee. Thanks, great job, Peter. [applause] You got fire-tested in the inland empire. Survived. First of all, just, I just want to thank all of you, of course, again, for being here and taking the time to, of your family time to be here this evening, number one. Number two, Senator Roth is still here. Thank you for helping us and supporting the organization of a great, great first town hall. So, we really appreciate your leadership and, and support. And then, thirdly, I just want to affirm a comment that, that Peter made and make it even more transparent. This is the biggest change, some might even say jolt, to the healthcare system in 50 years, okay? This is a big, big change with a complicated law that tries to address a very complicated healthcare system, okay? The one guarantee I will make is that we will not be perfect in 2014. And the one guarantee we'll make is that we, as a board, will probably make some mistakes getting this going, okay? We're doing our best to avoid those and anticipate those. But what we, what our commitment is to you is to be better in 2015 than we were in 2014, and better in 2016 than we were in 2015, and to learn as we go. And, and the way we do that is to keep an open door and be very good listeners with you, okay? On affordability, on the quality of the website, on outreach and enrollment strategies, on how, and how people are treated on the phone when they call, when they show up at a, at a center. If, if, if we, if we're making mistakes or not serving you well, we can't fix it unless we know about it. And so, our commitment to you is open-door policy and to continue to get better with time, because we're not going to, it's going to take us a few years to get this really right and to be a well-oiled machine, but we're going to do our best to at least be functional and to do well by as many people as we possibly can in year one. But, but I just want to, again, thank you for, for being here, number one, and number two, making sure that you understand, that we understand, that we've got to get better and better each and every day we serve you. Thank you.
Well said. [applause] Well, well, well said, Bob, and let me echo your words of thanks and acknowledgement. And Peter didn't know this, but part of his employee compensation performance review is to see how he handles the Q and As, and so, this, this was a good start, Peter, it was a good start. So, thank you for holding his feet to the fire and our feet to the fire. You know, I guess my, my closing comment would just be to underscore, this is an incredibly big ding-dang deal. I mean, the fact that you all are here, there's something about what you do, who you are, what you know, someone you know, there's something that brought you here, away from your families, your work, other activities, to spend two hours talking in the weeds, as well as at a high level, about this extraordinary policy chain that is changed, that is looming very, very large. And when I think about the opportunity, I am sobered, but I am so excited. And that's why I stood up to serve, and that's why you all stood up and came to this meeting. And, you know, when I look around the room, and I look forward to other town halls we will have, and look around other rooms, you know, fundamentally, we are looking at those who are going to be fundamental to the success of federal health reform here in California. Certainly, the exchange has an important role to play. We've shared many of those with you this afternoon. We need to offer affordable, high-quality products that people want to buy. We need to structure and execute outreach, marketing, eligibility determination, enrollment systems and functions that are consumer-centered and are reflective of the diversity of the people that, that we serve in this great stint. But, you know, there's only, and we need to purchase in a way that we really can be transformative, not immediately, at least over time, in terms of using our purchasing power to drive our health plans and provider networks and partnership, to be more focused on quality and affordability and service, to really empower consumers. But at the end of the day, we have got to get partnerships from all of you, whether you're an employer, whether you're a worker, whether you're insured or uninsured, schools, health providers, health plans, et cetera, to work with us in terms of connecting people to coverage. We talk in California about how we need to develop a culture of coverage, where health insurance is not something people purchase because of the mandate and the potential penalty, but they buy it because it is understood to be something that is valued, something that is available, affordable, and expected. So I want to underscore the shared obligation, the shared opportunity, and the shared responsibility. So success is dependent upon all of us, and your coming here, I think, is really a testimony to your understanding of the significance of this moment in time, and your eagerness to learn, to take back what you heard from us, but also importantly, for us to take back what we learned from you. And as Bob noted, it's going to be bumpy out of the blocks. Significant, complicated change always is, but we have a, a great board, an incredibly talented staff, and more, most fundamentally, a really interested and engaged set of stakeholders and partners in this effort. Together, we really can make meaningful and measurable improvements, not just in terms of the number of people with an insurance card, but people who have a better health outcome, better health status. At the end of the day, that is why we are doing what we do, to improve the health of the people of California. So thank you for your commitment and partnership to that.
And so my last note is, I said it jokingly, but I'm serious, like us on Facebook, is, you'll get updates. We need you to be informed, and we need you to be engaged partners. So with that, join us at coveredca.com or other routes, we'll be your partners. Thank you very much.